Okay, welcome everyone, this is the Dyton Historical Commission meeting. I'm Pat Heels, the chairperson, and it's Tuesday, May 10th, and it's what, 6:05 to get started. We're all in person tonight, which is awesome, yay! So, for the video, if anyone would introduce themselves, that would be great. Pat Olson?
Rafa Delphine.
Pam London-Gerson.
Bill Prude.
John Lawrence.
And we have guests with us this evening, and if they would introduce themselves.
Tommy Pacheco.
John Montero.
Vicki Kassar.
Okay, welcome. And, okay, so we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I totally disagree with the life of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, the secretary carries report.
I had a change, Pat, that came from the other path. Olson met a woman at DHS researching the great-grandfather. A vat of boiling liquid spilled on the man's legs and he died 10 days later. That should be the change. It's in the middle of the second page.
Okay, so it should be what?
It should be, "A vat of boiling liquid spilled on the man's legs. He died 10 days later." That was the only change brought to my attention.
Okay. That, um, there was one change that I saw, and that was the house number for Vicki's house. That is 49. And it's 221. Right, Vicki?
Right.
And I think that I did the same thing.
I'm sorry, 221?
Yeah, because the documents that we got said 49, because I did the same thing. But when they changed all of the numbers in town, it changed to 221, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of April 12, 2022. So moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, any more amendments? Let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we have to vote? By roll call?
We're democracy.
I know we have to vote.
No, by roll call when we're all present.
When we're all present. Maybe on the next one, we'll just be sure. I'll accept a motion now, and that motion passes. I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes as amended for April 12, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any more? I will vote by roll, Pat Olson?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, thanks, okay, that's done. All right, um, and moved our usual agenda around so that we could talk about the James Briggs Garden first. So, the garden's coming along, isn't it?
Very exciting.
Yeah. So we invited you to come and be a part of the discussion. We have some ideas, I don't know if you have some ideas as far as what this sign is. As you know, James Briggs was the landowner of that property, and the house that was there that was demolished and all of that. So, in order to honor him, you know, we figured, you know, naming the James Briggs Garden, the agricultural council agreed to, commission agreed to, and you agreed to. So, that's a nice memory for him, memorial for him. So now it's time to sort of garden sign up. So we had some ideas, I don't know if you had some ideas. We talked about a typical, like, meta-historic plaque that you can find, like, online, where you can have an inscription on it, you know, whatever you wanted to say. And then we also talked about, we do have a plaque program. This is one historical plaque thing that I found. It's very simple. We pass that around. That one runs, depending on what kind of hardware you use, runs about $282 to $350. You can either attach it to a building, or you can get a pole to hold it. And that doesn't include shipping and handling. We wouldn't have to pay taxes because the town's nonprofit, so we would be nonprofit. The other option is, we have a historical marker program in town, which is a burgundy-colored oval plaque that goes on the building. Rafa, we had talked about that, perhaps getting a little bit bigger for the James Briggs Garden. And I was looking at it, and could almost attach it right to the side or in the front of the shed. That's there. And I have a picture, it's not in color, of a marker. That's, you know, what that looks like.
They're the ones that we've been putting on the new, well, I should say, the old houses. The new program, and, I don't know, that like, maybe, you'd say, Rafa? Eight by 12?
Yeah. Yeah, the dimensions are ready. They're in there.
And what, that was like 125?
That's 125, yeah.
Okay.
For that size. This one, you can order as, that, I priced out like a 12 by 12. I brought a ruler so we could see, you can hear. Because I'm a very visible person. So like, this would be 12, this would be how big the square one that that one would be.
Square?
Yeah.
Is it big enough?
Well, it depends on how much we want to say on it. Because as you get bigger,
It's more expensive.
It's more expensive. Some of them that I looked at, you're starting at $600. So.
Do you know how much the next size up would be from this 12-inch oval one? So, I'm just curious, it's a big, open case?
Yeah.
And it's back from the street?
Right.
So, I don't know if that would be actually, like, a protective way to, I don't know, you know, being?
Right.
A garden, it could be a little bit bigger. If this one was cheaper, maybe the bigger size would be more comparable to what you're going to pay for that one?
Yeah.
Actually, I prefer this, only because the lettering is a little high, slightly elevated.
It's raised, yeah.
So I was thinking of the visibly compared, who know how to read Braille, really, if they can feel the letters, like.
Yeah, if they're reading Braille, the letters, it doesn't make any difference, because Braille is a series of dots and different.
We can't read Braille.
So, when I was envisioning the sign, and she'll tell you, I'm kind of over the top. I like everything, so. I really wanted, like, like, the house is gone. But I was envisioning that, like, I would really like something up, and you guys can totally shut me down, because like I said, I'm over the top, with a picture of the house, like, a nice, maybe, I don't know, if maybe, um,
We have a picture of that.
Ms. Santos has one of those really old pictures of the house, with like, a nice, brief description of maybe Captain Briggs and like, the family. I was thinking of more going along that route, because the house isn't there anymore. And, you know, we got the land there, and we named the guy, I like the name, the James Briggs Garden, because I love the house, and I would have loved the house to stay there, but it wasn't realistic for us to keep it there. So I want to more pay tribute to, like, the house and the family, and have that, like, you know, like visually presented for people that are coming there.
Okay.
Is that crazy?
I have a question, where, did anyone decide where it will be placed exactly? Because you've got the garden, so.
I wanted it in front of the garden, like, so if you've been over there, we have the front gate.
Yes.
We have the smaller gate where the ADA beds are, and then the ramp of the bigger gate. I ideally would have liked it in front, in between those.
Okay.
And kind of possibly.
Not visible from the road.
I mean, if it's going to be visible from the road, we would have to put it before the parking lot and access section.
Right, and even that's going to have to be massive, you're not going to be driving by.
And the town has
See either.
Really wanted us to stay away from the front, because they're envisioning the library over there.
I get you.
So, I'm concerned with putting it near the road, and then wanting to rip it down and move it again anyways. Where like, the garden is kind of like the sacred area that we've all agreed that nobody's going to touch it.
Right, right. We do have pictures of the house that the family provided, the Jericksman provided. The plaque.
That's a picture, right, that.
Yeah.
Where's the plaque?
And we did this for the wooded side town hall. So this is what this one looks like. Is that kind of what Vicki?
Yes, yes. I mean, I reached out to Mrs. Santos and Rafa emailed me, and there was really not a whole heck of a lot of, like, information. Like, I didn't know what I was getting into, like, trying to find information, but there's ideally really not a heck of a lot of information. So I like this idea, obviously can't use something like this, but maybe like a nice, blown-up picture of the house on this side, with some of like, you know, the family history on the side of it over here, and maybe like, a larger scale.
Right.
Like, I'm thinking maybe like, uh, 48 by 36. Big sign, because I want people to see it, and I want it to be good.
I guess, I was saying, like, when you go try some town park, there's these stands.
Yeah, yeah.
That sort of thing, and even sweet knolls.
Yeah, they should have been graded in the golden.
Maybe one of those?
Yeah.
Photo of the house and description, history. So we need to inquire how much that cost.
Yeah. See, the, when you get into the cost of it, like, we want to have the signage for you, but we can't spend our whole budget on the sign.
Yeah, so we could maybe see how much the sign costs, and then see if I can get approval from AgCom to pull some out of my budget to go towards it, versus what I need to do for the garden. I don't know if that, I'm still learning how all this town commission and committees thing all work and everything comes together.
Which is fine.
So, it is, yes.
All right. Yeah, because when you're talking about, like, 3/8 inches by 36 inches, like, 4 by 3.
Yep.
That's going to, you know, from what I briefly saw, it's going to get crazy real fast. Can you look at the ones down in, um, President Town Hall Park and see if we can, you know?
Yeah, like I said, I have no idea how much anything like this is going to cost, but if it's going to be anything that's like, on the smaller scale, it's, we're going to have to talk to Mr. Aggy, probably, about just putting it on the side of the shed.
Right.
But I really want it visible, like, I want it out there and pay tribute to where the land came from.
If Kevin Smith, he probably would know the costs, right? Obviously, it's not a sign.
Yeah, yeah, because that's under the parson's name, yeah. The other thing too, is when we were working with the picture, I know there's that, sure, and I'm, and that's from the family. And I know there is another picture with, um, bunting on the house, and I think it was from like, 1912, and I, around that time period. And I just saw a picture, and, um, either the town story or the Historical Society has that, because I just saw it.
The older the picture, the better, I feel like, but the older the picture, the harder it is to blow it up, because we can't get rid of the pixelations.
And, and the other thing too, is when you're using a picture like that, depending on how we're going to get it on, because this will be another expense, is the transferring of it to the plaque. You know, because you can't just take a picture and stick it on.
Yeah, stick it on there, yeah.
Because then it'll just wash away.
I don't know if we can have both, you know, if we're talking about that big sign that we like, how?
Because they do put pictures on.
Yeah, that's going to be, um, John, you were saying that you were maybe considering Aggie, right?
Yeah, like, depending on the cost, do they like, extend those?
Yep.
And like, kind of like, paint over, like, a big?
They can even etch the house, like, they can do it.
Like, apply it or something and just neatly do that.
And not the burning, but it's like, um,
And start with that.
It's almost like a CAD machine, and they stencil it on the computer, and the computer has the image, and it just runs it, like, laser, laser prints it into the wood. So I don't know if Aggie has that.
They do a lot, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If not them, then I don't know, first of all.
Yep.
The other thought I just had is, how soon do you want the sign?
I am patient.
You're patient.
I'm completely patient, I want quality over quantity. I want this thing to look nice and last as long as humanly possible.
Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, absolutely. You know, it's not like you want it to fall apart.
Like, if it takes like, two years for us to be able to, like, keep the money aside and get something nice put out there, I'm fine with waiting, I just want to know. I just thought it was a really nice idea to do it, so.
Okay, okay. And we can do some research, if you do some research too, and come up with anything. You have Rafa's email.
Yeah.
And you have mine. So, you know, just shoot us an email, we can put some stuff together, and revisit again in June.
Sure.
And well, you know, if we have anything worth, you know, so that you guys can come and talk about it again, or?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, all right. Great.
Does anyone want to reach out to Aggie? Uh, BP, I think, would be better, yeah.
The problem with what you're going to run into now is school year is over.
Seniors have like, one week.
Yeah, and there, so they're not going to take any projects on now, but they may take projects on in September. So.
Which would give us time to sort of work with them on our design.
Yeah.
You know, with the features, to know what we're looking for. And the cost for materials.
I could reach out to BP.
Yeah, they did a great job with our shed.
Yeah, they did.
They did, yeah.
Do you know?
But Mr. Aggy was the one that was in touch with them, and Mr. Mullin.
Okay.
To get that all, and that was just a pleasant spread, it was like, sweet, kids are going to love this shed.
I'll talk with them, get in contact for this. Is there anyone want to talk to the Bristol Aggie?
I can reach out to Leslie, she's on my AgCom.
Okay, oh, she's your, yeah.
Yep.
All right, so if you want to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we have a start of a plan.
Sorry, we haven't started.
Now, are you planning to have vegetables this year?
Yes, we've already got stuff already started, we started the cold crops, May 1st. I'm actually going to finance committee, and then going to water the garden. I just emailed out everybody a volunteer spot thing for some of the scouts and stuff to get started. We're going to keep it kind of closed for now, as far as to like, who gets in there and who's volunteering, so we can get the kids some service hours and get the kids involved first. And then I think, like, next year and the year after, it'll be more like, I'll have a Facebook page for the garden, and like, we'll be able to have like, a link for like, community members, that might come down and help out, so. It's just going to get organized first.
Right, yeah, yeah. And then all of the vegetables go to the food pantry?
In Lincoln Village.
Lincoln Village?
Yep.
Oh, that's cool.
Yep.
That's good.
Just make sure we go live and talk.
Oh, come on.
Yeah, I already put the locks on the gates, I got to go put the locks on the gates. When I leave here, go water the garden and stuff.
I think when my kids do.
Do you have any other questions for us?
I don't think so.
All right, so that would be our first go-to, you know, to try and price that out. So, do we, you know, um, look at some of the others, you know, if, just in case, what a big a sign like our markers would cost, just?
To have it to compare to.
Yeah, I think the better information we have, the better decision we can make. Like, if one doesn't work out, we don't have to go back right back to square one, we'll have all our information, so. Okay, great, awesome, well, thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, two days just left, I think, so I have to correct that. I know you, buddy, I know you, no, the last names. I feel like searching and searching.
You're so many, I miss her.
I know, still the barn.
I don't ever see you. I'll have to text her, I know.
Text her, because she's, she's full-time, though, it's full-time.
Yeah.
Everybody's good?
All right, thank you.
Bye.
All right, thanks, Jen. All right.
So, let me decide which.
Yeah, um, you can start writing some stuff up, you're good at that.
I like Braille too. Be used to that, Chase, in case you want to.
All right, since Vicki's here, and so she doesn't have to sit with us all night, unless you want to hang out with us all night.
I'll hang out for a while, but.
All right, we'll go, we'll go quickly, how's that? We'll do you before we talk about budget stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll leave after we talk about, I don't, we'll do your budget stuff.
Okay. So, I see that we did pick up the plaque, and there was a spelling error on it, so it will be returned and fixed. Can I see it? And it's so nice.
Where's that item?
In Town Hall, near the counter, we were marked, and the town, we're going to,
Got it.
Triggers office, so, okay, that's two minutes, pretty.
You know, too, I think commission should be absolutely capitalized.
Yeah, it's not really consistent, some letters are capital letters, so, not, so.
Like, Dyken Historical.
Yeah, the C has to be capitalized, too.
Oh, so you're finding some more things for?
I think photo courtesy of.
Was a bother, I think Erin Nellan should, actually should be capitalized.
Proper Nellan.
Okay, um, Segregated Schoolhouse. At our last meeting, we worked on the wording for the purpose statement, which I sent everyone. Does it, did anyone have any more edits or comments on it? So you want me to read everybody's one, or?
Yeah, I mean, sure, I mean, do, or, or you want?
Okay, this is, all right, the revised statement is, "The Segregated Schoolhouse was built around 1830 in Dyton, Massachusetts, and is the only one roomed schoolhouse that is still owned by the town. It was a single classroom for students in grades one through eight. It has not been opened since 2012. The goal of the Dyton Historical Commission is to rehabilitate the schoolhouse to be repurposed as a historical and living museum, so Dightonians can bring back and relive the history of that area." That.
Era.
That era. So that's what we rewrote. Any other edits? We're good?
We're good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the statement of purpose for the Segregated Schoolhouse. We did notification, so moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Is this, in what way will this statement be used?
This is our mission statement, our purpose statement, from this statement we'll develop goals. So, as we're moving forward, it'll be clear what, why we're doing it, why we do the Segregated.
If one were asked a question, say, at Town Hall meeting or something, would that be the answer?
That would be part of the answer, that's our mission, yes. Okay. And a motion to approve the statement?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Years ago, didn't the prison people come up into some deletting or painting?
They did some painting, yeah.
Oh. I was wondering if it had to be done, that part of it had to be done again, for factory, that's a bit.
It, yeah.
When you have a volunteer, it's cheaper, obviously.
When we get to the point of what it's going to cost us, we'll be looking, it's different all, all kinds, I'm sure. All right, um, do we have a motion to approve the purpose of the Segregated, the statement of purpose?
I, it was someone, I mean, second by eye. We just have to.
All right, Pat? Rafa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, okay, thank you. So that's the first step, and we'll move on. This rail trail, the DCI requested a simple map of the locations for the tentative list of historic sites, so I sent that along. Then Rafa and I reviewed the tentative list with our town historian, Myrna, and more work is muted on the details for the list and some refining. So, that's an ongoing process. The report on the nap crane display at Bristol Aggie, Rafa reached out to Adele, and we're on hold, right?
We're on hold because they're crazy over here. That's what she said.
Never works.
We're crazy over here.
All right, but we're not forgot.
We're not, we're not, we're at the end of the school, so keep pushing.
The end of the school year, I mean, the seniors, and, it is, I get it.
Next is fire, crazer, festival planning. So we have activities, and Pam has some quotes on the crayon purchase for our handouts, so. Myrna has said we could use the coloring book, so. Of the coloring book. Pass that around.
How many?
I'm not sure how many, there are some copies that were stored at the library, and, um, they're looking for them for us so that we can use them. There may be 20 to 30 copies of those, like that. So we can use those, or we can put those aside, because she did sell those to, um, support the Segregated Schoolhouse Fund. She also gave me a notebook that has the pages that are loose, so we can just copy the individual pages, and kids could pick the letter that they wanted to color, you know, with their friends, if we choose to go with, um, coloring.
I like, I like the idea, if we choose to go with coloring of an individual paper instead of a whole book.
Right, because they can take it, they can color it, um.
Does it say Dyton something?
Oh, yeah.
So on every page it says a Dyton, like, this is a really nice, the library, the library.
Yeah, it has like, yeah, somehow it ties in just Dyton.
Okay.
It also would, I think, be more, maybe easier to make copies of the single pages than it is to, you know, do the coloring book. So I think that would be good for the younger kids, you know, get a pack of crayons and a coloring page, and they can sit and color, and off they go.
Where, where did this book, I mean, it came from her, right?
She.
Where, how did she?
She developed it, and Mary Bennett drew the pictures. Mary Bennett's a town resident, an artist, so Mary drew the pictures, um, and then Myrna got donations to print it.
So, did she ever print these in a ma, en masse, or a lot of, lot of?
Yeah, she printed quite a few, she sold them to support the Segregated Schoolhouse Fund.
I'm just wondering if, if we, um, it was possible to say, say it was not possible financially to print a bunch of these for our own purposes to give out? Can we collect, like, a dollar, say?
Well, that's one of the questions, um, I have a list of things to talk to Mike about, because there's a whole thing about this town, because it needs a commission's fundraising, so, and that would be like, in the fundraising department, so we have to get a clarification on that.
Right, we need to know, say, from her, what a printing cost were on those, you know, the?
I think she said, she sold them for $6, the kids got the coloring.
How much?
$6.
Six?
Yeah. Because she got don, she got donations for the printing, um, because it was also, it was a fund, right, for the Segregated Schoolhouse Fund.
This is pretty neat, though.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
What is Z for zebra? You know, there's zebras in Dyton.
That's what it says, no zebras in Dyton.
They could have like, it was zoo, the only, the Town Hall is a zoo.
Aggie is, Aggie is a zoo. So, then I was thinking about it, and I was thinking, even if we took some of the old masks of Dyton and put them on our tables so people could look at them?
Yeah.
You know, the, these are the map of the yard, some of them, the houses are labeled, some of them, the streets are labeled, you know, they're really fascinating to look at, so, if we had those for people to look at, um, that would be good. Then, we talked about activities for older, you know, kids, middle school, fourth, fifth, middle school kids, you know, trying to think of something that would intrigue them. would intrigue them, but we didn't really come up with anything, I don't know. But Rappa has an idea.
Yeah. I was thinking maybe get these kids interested in learning cursive writing. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I think, I think it would be great to introduce them and maybe, uh, have little contests and distributed prizes, like, if a kid, let's say eight-year-old kid can, uh, completely write in cursive a simple sentence, you know, give them, I don't know, boxing candies or something, surprise. And the more difficult the sentence is, the bigger the price, the sort of thing. Anything to keep their interest, you know, it's just a sad.
Do you think they should teach them in school anymore?
I don't know.
Some don't, some don't.
Yeah, it seems like even kids who like cursive, they're like, whoa, like, wow, that's hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I have mixed thoughts on cursive being.
Well, let's discuss, that's where the problem arises.
Oh, I don't know, I don't remember the last time I actually wrote in cursive, you know, we're all kind of. My daughter doesn't even use pen, you know, she just uses the iPad and transposes to no, I don't think.
I think it's a good method, fundamental, I, I can agree too.
Oh, we have to teach kids how to, well, from a historical perspective, because the U S Constitution is in cursive.
Yes.
Because literally every old historical document is in cursive. So if you were to study history, you would have to learn how to write cursive, you know.
True. They're hardly even read now, the way, never mind having.
Well, there's a difference between the old.
Cursive, cursive. Yeah.
Old one.
And a renewed script, so, um, that was a thought, another thought was somehow to hook into, um, you know, the stories and, you know, the histories, not sure how we'd be able to do that. Getting people to talk about their family's stories, cuz everyone has a family history, everyone has a story, and usually they like to talk, so if we capture those somehow, you know, record them or sit and, you know, just, they're gonna be fascinating to keep. Do we have into families, I'm reading genealogy and all of that, but.
How can we get our hands on some of the old games? Um, when you, when you go to Sturbridge Village, they have, you know, you like hit the, it's almost like a hula hoop and you hit it with a stick, there's a bunch, even simple things, I mean, they had like leather stuffed and tied into a ball that, that you just toss, maybe something like that, so. The studios kids could learn cursive and the active kids could learn.
I know Joey, I have. I know Joey, I've seen, I saw old games.
I mean, we can't guarantee they're gonna come back in the same shape though, so.
Yeah.
Butter churning, do we have anything like that? I'm just trying to think of what.
Well, I think, like, we talked about the student desk, bringing the desk over, couple of slates and chalk, you know, to write some stuff on, so.
Yes.
Just that experience, um.
Okay.
All right, so, are we in agree, agreement with the coloring pages, like just being singles and the kids just do one for the activity? And if we're gonna do the coloring pages, that leads into the crayons, so Pam has a quote for crayons, do you wanna talk about that, Pam?
Who, I didn't bring my final quote, but it, it came to, yeah, two fifteen?
I do. Yeah.
Okay. Um, I went with just a plain, it's almost like a paper bag, you know, box, I didn't think we wanted anything shiny and it just has the same stamp that we had on our bracelets, I heart Dayton, but that was simple enough for kids and then it would be more money to do the bigger logo. Um, and they were, what was it, three hundred, a price tag?
Yeah, three hundred, uh, hundred and twenty dollars, the setup fee was sixty and the shipping was thirty-five.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
So a total of two hundred and fifteen.
I'm gonna still see what I can do with the shipping because also when they arrive, you don't wanna hang it around, um, someone's death if they melt. You know, so I'm gonna see if I can just pick them up, air mail, but that was the cheapest we could go with, and I think that kind of felt about the number of younger people that would appreciate that, that I think we ha, it's hard to remember the whole year, but I think that felt about right.
Right.
Yeah, about three hundred?
Yeah, cuz I thought we were talking five hundred, a price for a thousand, that was a bit much.
Yeah, so three was.
Three, cuz we handed out, how many bracelets did we order last year, I needed to check that, it was around two hundred, I thought.
Adults like those too, no?
How many, how many, where did I look?
That's just like four. But we had plenty of pens.
Yeah.
Okay.
Plenty, so we can hand out pens again, yeah. So, and now that we're talking about this, I just remembered I have for John, uh, shirt and a bag of pens and.
They can practice writing cursive with their pens. You know, you know, it's like, it's like notepads or stuff.
So, all right, um, does anyone else have any thoughts about what we should do for the firecracker festival or if we haven't enough?
What about Dunk, the Historical Commission chairman?
Oh, man, the vice chair holds too.
No.
Dunk's fun, it's like one last year.
We had candy, right?
Yeah.
Didn't you bring candy?
Yeah, we, we bought candy, there's still some of that left, just a handful, maybe half. I think, so we can put that out. We have our tablecloth. We have our shirts, so we're.
Our shirts.
All right, so. Well, we're gonna, I have maps, I know, we can use those. We'll have the desk from the si, from the schoolhouse, there's some slates there. We'll do the coloring sheets, we should make copies, we should make copies at Town Hall, so. That would be okay, I'll check on that, and then, um, it'll be the price for the crayons. Does anyone have anything else they wanna include for firecracker? Sounds good. All right, I entertain a motion for the expense for the crayons of two hundred and fifteen, not to exceed two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Can we go with two thirty, just in case?
Not to exceed two thirty?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to actually make it even lower, but, you know. Still a couple months away and shipping and they haven't been printed yet, so.
Right.
I just don't wanna be trapped by fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
That was the exact quote that I sent you, Pat, to begin.
Right. And I'm gonna look in. So. That would work, we still would have.
Don't be polite.
Yeah, because with our, our budget, we have the three hundred dollars for the umbrellas still, thirty-two dollars for the plaque there. I think a two fifteen, that does about a hundred and seventy-eight dollars in our budget, so.
Mm-hmm, so, it's okay, I would, I would say let's, uh, go with two thirty, so some more for me, but the crayons.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? The non-go vote, Pat Olson? Aye. Rappa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, okay. Max, all right, now I'll take a motion to, um, take our agenda item number six, historical marker program out of order. So, is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, we will vote, Pat?
Aye.
Rappa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so we'll talk about Vicky's house. At two twenty-one, Summer Street, we didn't have a hard copy for John, so he can.
Thirty.
Thank you.
So at our last meeting, Vicky.
You said the same thing there?
Yes, yeah. Um, Vicky and Dan came, shared us, shared with us all of their information, where Vicky's house in twenty, two hundred twenty-one, Summer Street, which is really quite fascinating, and I actually went home, I didn't read it thoroughly, I was fascinated, I wanted to know if you, did you go beyond nineteen oh one?
No, I didn't, um, cuz the first, the, the plot plan was, uh, nineteen oh seven.
Yeah.
And it's not, it doesn't look like what it looks like, because I actually have, we have private room behind us, which I think was used for garbage pickup or whatever back in the day.
Yes. Yeah.
But, in the, the wording of it, for who owed it first, I honestly feel it needs to be the original Mount Hope Finishing Company, not Mount Hope Factory, not Mount Hope.
Mount Hope Finishing Company?
Right.
And what did you decide, Mount Hope Factory?
Finishing, no, I don't, I don't, I want the original title.
Which is your?
So on your application, you are Mount Hope Finishing Company.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it appears that, I think the consensus was that the house was probably built around nineteen twelve, is that?
When I researched, what I researched, it looks like it's nineteen ten.
Ten, okay. Something.
It's definitely after nineteen oh seven.
Why is that significant?
Why it's what?
Uh, the nineteen oh seven.
That's the plot, the original plot map.
Okay.
In the papers.
So I guess we can make the, uh, conclusion that since the mill was per, originally purchased in nineteen oh one, nineteen oh two timeframe, that the company, Mount Hope Finishing Company, probably, a strong probability, built those houses, cuz they owned them later.
And there's rumor that their craftsmen used kit homes.
They what?
The Sears.
Their, their craftsmen, Sears.
Yeah.
The Sears.
They give another real old traps, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it wasn't a house that was left over from the old mill.
No.
It was, it had to be built by, probably when they moved, when they first started cranking up, they realized they had a need for a lot more housing, probably.
Did they change ownership early on?
Where I went into Elizabeth Lee with the first occupants.
Yeah.
But it was always owned by this, by the mill?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So then later on, in nineteen twenty-two roughly, that's when Milliken decided that he was gonna, cuz he wasn't living in Dayton. And early on, he commuted from Twon and a couple, I think he, yeah, Twon, he had a house, or he rented a house, and then in nineteen twenty-two, um, is when he contracted with, um, I can never remember those figures, landscape architect.
Olmsted.
Olmsted, yes.
Of course, the original Olmsted had died about twenty years prior to that, but his, uh, his sons were still running it. So, he had decided to build his own home up the end of Chase Street at that point.
Right.
And then the houses all along Chase Street down to, but not including your house and some of the other houses across the street and so forth, so. Okay, so it's pretty interesting.
I think you're right about it, it should be Mount Hope Finishing Company, because even on the one where if Mount Hope Finishing Company sells it to Schwartz.
Yes.
You know, so yes.
Yeah. Because I know that some of the other houses that are not on Summer Street, it's listed differently.
Right, so it depends on what entity they're using when they sew, when they sewed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what was the name of the, the grantor to the first private, we own person, I, is it?
What's that for?
Mount Hope Finishing Company, it's in the paperwork.
Mount Hope.
Finishing Company.
Okay, which is a different company than in, in, but, but your house was sold. What, I should look it up, like, when was the date when, when the Mount Hope Company?
Doesn't have a, they bought my house.
But it should be in, you have all the grantor, grantee transactions, so I don't wanna belabor the point, but I'm just, um, interested.
When Mount Hope Finishing Company, and this one is all the paperwork that Vicky gave us last month, Mount Hope sells it to Charles Schwartz and Fred Schwartz in nineteen forty-nine.
Now, that's really interesting, I think, because the plant didn't close until nineteen fifty-one, I think, is when they moved down to North Carolina.
Right.
And my house and all houses further off Chase Street were thrown into a different realty company called Dayton Realty Company.
Right, yeah.
And my house was sold to its first private owner in just about fifty-one. So for some reason, he decided, somebody in the company decided to sell her house at least two years prior to the official sale of the company, it's interesting, why, why?
This was December twenty-second, so it was almost nineteen fifty.
Almost nineteen fifty.
Oh, it was.
I, my personal opinion is that they were getting ready to move.
Yeah, they, they knew, you don't move a whole company.
Right.
They knew.
I've read every single.
That's what I gleaned from some of the readings I've done, that they, there was a whole mess of stuff going on, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well.
Where was the union, but.
Yeah.
There was also the mills that were in, um, was it, well, wherever in Bedford, they were, they were already moving.
They were already moving.
Right, they were on, yeah, it's on, oh, that's all documented to the first private, all the, and all the rest of it, have you read that, by the way?
Yeah.
So anyway, but, maybe I can back up and say it's, since forty-nine, you think the sale took place in forty-nine?
It says right here. Bill, it's in your, it's in your packet that you bought too. We have that.
Still, they were trying, I guess Pete, Pete Milliken, who was the guy across, on Park Street across from, he was one of the sons.
Right.
And he was not in favor of selling company. And there might have been some arguing going on, but still, even so, a year difference in the sale of the houses up on Chase Street, including mine.
Right.
From yours, and a different realty company, and it's also earlier. So, I don't know, I don't think they would be in a big rush to sell everything because they thought a year really.
No, but they could've, they could've been looking for money too, you know, so.
Oh, capital.
Trying to cap, yeah, their capital and all that, so, whatever.
Yeah, wow.
One, but anyway, so the deed says Mount Hope Finishing Company, so that's what Vicky's marker said. All right, all right.
Um, what about the date? Approximately circa?
Yeah, you could say circa, many of the older homes, we do not have, like the one at the, um, Historical Society, Williamsburg Davis House, that's circa seventeen seventy, you don't have an exact date.
Right.
Um, there's other homes that say things, you know, you can't, it's not there, so we can say circa, you think's nineteen oh seven?
Nineteen ten, nineteen.
Nineteen oh seven, you said?
No, that's only the clock of all.
Okay. Okay. So circa nineteen.
So I, you know, and I don't think they had the houses ready to go at that point. Not up here on trains yet. So I figure nineteen ten's kind of the middle of the road.
And that seems reasonable.
I agree.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Our pipes you talked about, right, the water installation, was that nineteen twelve?
Right. Right.
Right, the water, yeah, so, I guess nineteen ten. It's all our criteria.
All right. Um, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the historical marker for two twenty, two hundred twenty-one, Summer Street. To say Mount Hope Finishing Company circa nineteen ten.
So.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? More chance to vote, Pat? Aye. Rappa?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, congratulations.
Thank you, Vicky. Yep, another one.
Yay.
What's the total now?
Huh?
What's the total now?
Yeah, there's gonna be a couple more, I mean, they wanna, they wanna.
Woody, Woody's house, he wants one.
Yeah. Yeah.
See, she's spreading the word.
But she's got, he's got a big break.
Oh, your neighbor?
Yeah, next door, we're about our inventory.
Diamond factories or something, it was, we told you, diamond factories.
Right, and that's what the deeds are gonna say, so whatevers in the deeds.
Right.
Yeah, cool.
They actually have the deed framed.
I was.
When do I get the information and how?
I'll send it to you tonight, the email, I will come up with the, the sign maker. The question is, do you, how do we want the name uh, to appear on the plaque, Mount, no abbreviation, just completely spell out. Mount Hope Finishing Company, company, spell out, or abbreviated to CEO? Do we want Mount abbreviated to eighteen?
Oh, see, and this one here, it's Mount spelled out.
Okay, so Mount spelled out, Hope, H O P E, finishing, complete, spell out, company, spell out.
Yeah, and I'm looking.
So it's like Mount Hope Finishing Company circa, relines, is that what you think?
That's what we have, just a document.
Yeah, Mount Hope, um.
Yeah, and then, and the other ones, it's, it's abbreviated.
Which one?
Uh, this one's furrow, it's Mount Hope, Mount is abbreviated, so it's company. Same from Costley. It's abbreviated, so.
I just speak English, please, on the side.
Yeah.
Wrong with the D.
I think the abbreviations would be mine.
On the D, yeah, the D is Mount Hope Finishing Company, spell out.
Right, on the last one, but the rest of them, they're abbreviated. So the one that goes to Vicky is abbreviated, Mount Hope Finishing Company.
But that side is original. I make the Mount go back.
You want the Mount spelled out?
Hey, she's paying for it.
She's paying for it.
Um. Just the old thing, spacing and.
It's always tight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see, well, I'll ask the.
You'll, you'll turn proof and then it's really up to Vicky, I, I mean, you know.
Yeah, this is.
Well, kind of.
It's up to us.
It's up to us, because it's gonna set the, um.
It's gonna understand.
Right.
See, and I like to keep everything clean. So you can't abbreviate down the line for some other area.
Yeah, see, but what I'm afraid of is that it's gonna use too many words into a small space.
Oh, I understand.
So that it's not gonna look crisp and people, you know, will be attracted to it, so.
What's supposed to be, what, nine, nine fourteen?
Yeah, I'm gonna get my ruler out again.
Thank you.
Actually, it's, it's.
Well, they sent you a proof, right? They sent you a proof, see, but.
Yeah, he's gonna say it's.
Yeah.
That's the problem with this, he never sent us a proof.
Right.
I know, right?
Okay. All right, so you're good to go. Thank you, Vicky. Thank you.
Thank you all.
You're the first one. You're the first one.
You're the, you're the pioneer, you're.
Oh, no, you're the second one, that's why I was surprised.
I'm the first one in the village, in the village, there you go.
In the village, and hopefully there'll be a cascade of other homes.
I know, I know, I think there's a little interest in it, I think.
Just spread the word.
I get it, yeah.
Pretty quick, pretty quick, yeah.
Three weeks or so, less, two weeks, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, don't worry about that, we'll get it out. No, no, no.
No, no, you lose your balance.
No, it's not, let's see, well.
Just stubborn.
I'm an acquirer.
Like me.
Just like him.
All right.
Congratulations.
It's a beautiful chair. My grandfather used to do one.
That's, that's, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, my grandfather.
All right, moving on now, we'll go to our budget, so. The invoice, the overlay map hasn't come in yet, oh, she can go up this way.
No, what is she parked, she parked?
Yeah, um. So we're still waiting for the invoices, um, for the overlay map, so that's still set aside. And the contract's been executed, so. What else we can do, they don't want their money at a passover. So, um, for our. And while we're talking about that, I figured that we will be spending majority of our money, pretty close to all of it. By June thirty, by the end of the fiscal year, between Firecracker Festival and whatever else comes up in between, so. Um, one of my good signs for the change of books garden will be out of FY twenty-three, so. The discussion that we had today. Um, Rafa and I met with the finance committee on day three about our proposed budget for FY twenty-three. It's under review, they like explained the increase that it was for the overlay map and FY twenty-three and, you know, the little rare process and all that. They had a couple of questions about that and that was that. So, no simple.
Five minutes.
I am done. Uh, okay. Moving on to the preservation, Stacy's wrapping up the form fees for our project, for the community-wide survey. Uh, she was at the Historical Society today, getting a few more details that she needed. Uh, we will have the opportunity to review the draft inventory forms and, um, the area forms. What is she, what she's gonna do is send a link to me, that'll be, um, read-only. So you'll be able to open up the link, you'll be able to see the forms that are completed. Review them, if you have any edits or anything, just jot them down and you can email them to Stacy and me. She, I, I looked at a couple of them, they're really good. Also, we'll have a listing of properties that will be National Register Historic District eligible. So, there'll be a criteria sheet for that. And we'll be able to start in registering some of our properties that way too, kind of exciting.
Uh huh.
So look for that, like you said, probably within the next week or so. Town meeting is on June sixth. Our article for, our part two for our property survey is on the, um, the warrant.
Do you know the number of the article?
Not yet, no.
Do we have a copy of that, or not yet, or?
No, not yet, I have the draft that, um. It just, to see if the town will go to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from the historic resources reserve to be expanded by the Community Preservation Commission for the hiring of a preservation consultant to complete the Dayton-wide community survey project based to update the listing of historic resources in town, or taking the action relative in there too. So it's been under review and I think tomorrow night, the selectmen will be looking at the warrant if they're maybe. That was on the agenda. So we'll have to, um.
Is there another article that would refer to the second guy's schoolhouse?
No, that's not to FY twenty-five. So. Last time when we went to it, I mean, I just found out, we just gave a brief description of what we were going to do and we had no trouble getting it passed. The finance committee also reviews it too and, you know, put in there for the warrant, you know, who were not. So. Rafa wanted to know about, you want to disseminate any information about this warrant article?
See, that's your problem, because if you don't know the number of the article, it's hard to vote, I mean, it's, it's a challenge, because I was thinking maybe creating like signs, like that you can plant in your front lawn and says, you know, vote yes on article, whatever.
Well, I have a.
June sixth, so, but we don't know the date, I mean, we don't know the article.
Right, done number, yeah, article number, yeah.
And to think the town, town meeting is just eleven months away.
Right, right, so I Word of mouth works quite well.
I'm sure we can disseminate information here through Facebook and social media and whatnot.
Can I say something?
Is it about the, our article?
It's what he, what he's talking about. What makes you think that there's any additional affirmation required to disseminate to the public on this level?
Well, because they don't know what, what the, what the topic is.
What?
They don't know what the topic is, if we know the, the exact number of the article to which this topic refers to then at least the voters will have a clear idea of what.
Well, we didn't do anything like that on the first go around, correct?
No.
So why, why, and it voted substantially overwhelmingly, why, why would you, um. Let me, let me just say what I'm really thinking. Sometimes it's better to let sleeping dogs lie. Because a lot of people come in and kind of hypnotically just vote for stuff they don't they don't care or they don't understand, I'm not saying I'll bet they're wrong, I'll say that. And if you were to drill in on that or make it more public, although, we're not trying to cover it up either. Um, you could get people going, how much do you want, for what? Oh, no way, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I don't think that's.
It's not gonna cost them any money, because it's already.
Yeah, so they can't anything that's on the town's warrant has that possibility, so. I think myself, first of all, you know, to do signs and ultimately, wash your money. And.
Unless we find a sponsor or a donor.
A sponsor or a donor.
Always through signs.
We don't have time.
Always through signs, it takes like, I go to Dave Oak Printing and they can whip me up a sign one night.
Well, but we don't know the number, we don't have a donor. That's a weird sound.
Alien. What, save history, vote yes on June sixth?
Personally, I, I think that our word of mouth then is, is with, um, something on our Facebook gauge when we get closer.
A word of mouth is not enough, you also have to actually call people, the people who vote, the people who wanted to transform the schoolhouse into a lovely living museum. You know, they say, oh, yeah, we want to save, but they don't vote, they don't even show up. So what, you're gonna call them one by one on the phone, hi, I'd like you to.
Yeah, sometimes you do.
You know, you have to force these people, because you know, hey, sorry, school is damaged, demolished, gone, because you didn't show up to vote.
That's what gets on the school budget is, is heard, when there's a problem about school budget, that sounds, the parents get there.
So we're all just like so-called history lovers.
Well, we have to start calling them. Does anyone else have anything to add to the discussion?
Maybe I'll ask one. If one of the articles here ain't ready, the other person please, they'll like to use it.
Okay. We will leave it at that, okay. We don't have any correspondence, we don't have any public input. We still have one vacancy on our mission, so if we know anyone that's interested. And our next meeting is June fourteenth at six PM. John was excited to know that we're gonna be meeting at six from now, it works good for him.
I didn't realize that was from now on, so.
Yeah.
So please.
Oh, is that in minutes?
Oh, no.
So is this permanent, more or less here, or for us?
No. No, we got bumped out.
No, I didn't really put, I didn't put it, I just put May ten, six PM, but now we know, okay, so this is.
Does six PM work for you? Okay.
Makes no difference.
Are we going to be meeting here next, next month?
No, we should be back now, no problem. We got bumped out for the.
Six, six o'clock, are you?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay.
Yeah. Okay, fine, thank you for that.
We have to vote to adjourn, right?
Yes. I was kidding there, I was, I had to make sure I. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? No, okay, that motion carries, thank you, and let me stop the recording.
I've never been in here. No.
Never been to that side.
So where's the closet where the infamous Kane was?
Oh, sorry.
Well, I guess it's off. Hold on.
I think it's still on.
I think it's still on, at the back, but it's. You're right.
This isn't blowing.
No, we're, we're good, I'm, we, no, what's going on?
It's still, is it recording?
End.
Oh, green, huh?
End, end.
And.
Oh, it's a.
And. Meaning. No, it's, it's, it's difficult to do that though on a large screen, because you just, you just don't do it all.
Yeah, you should have asked.